Hey, everyone. Just get everybody filed in.
Councilmember Jerry, do you want to come up here? Is everybody in? Councilmember Green, would you like to come over here? Mr. Lopez, you guys can come over here.
All right, I think we have everyone. All right. All right, well, thank you for being with us today. I'm Helena Moreno. I am currently city council by president here in the city of New Orleans. I'm also mayor-elect for the city of New Orleans. Today, I am joined by community business and faith-based leaders along with the head of the National Urban League, our former mayor, Mark Morial, along with our congressman, Troy Carter, and members of the New Orleans City Council. And today, we are standing here united, expressing our deep concern over recent actions by Border Patrol in our city and in our region. While we, of course, firmly believe that the most dangerous and violent offenders must be taken off of our streets, unfortunately, it does not appear that these are the people being targeted in Operation Catahoula Crunch. This operation is actually causing harm for the city of New Orleans, and it's causing harm for people beyond those who are being targeted. We have businesses that are closing. We have workers afraid to show up, and ultimately, there is an economic impact, a negative economic impact, that is spreading across our city and also across our region. We, of course, recognize federal law and federal enforcement authority, but we also stand here with an obligation to ensure that federal operations are conducted transparently, constitutionally, and with respect for local residents. Our priorities are, of course, public safety, protection of people's rights, and maintaining trust between government and the community. So today, we want to bring to you demands of the Border Patrol. And these are demands that the city council has actually just sent over to Border Patrol Commander Gregory Bavino, that I've been watching y'all's media reports, and he appears to be in our city and in our region. There are five points to these demands. The first starts with reporting requirements to ensure public trust. We are requesting regular public briefings from federal agencies that include data on the stops, detentions, warrants, and outcomes, information on civil rights compliance and oversight mechanisms. We are specifically asking for clear information on the number of individuals detained within city limits, the legal basis for each detention, including warrants or charges, whether anyone without a warrant has been taken into custody, and if any of the people detained have violent criminal histories. Without this full visibility into these enforcement actions, it is impossible to determine whether this particular operation is actually targeting the most dangerous offenders. We've constantly heard on the news claims that this operation is about going after rapists, pedophiles, and murderers, but is it really casting a much wider net? The second piece that we want to talk about in our second demand is due process protections. Every person, regardless of immigration status or background, actually has constitutional protections. So we expect prompt access to legal representation, clear notification of rights during encounters with federal agents, no detentions without properly issued warrants or clear probable cause. The third piece, and this is a really key and critical piece, we insist that all federal agencies comply with the request of our NOPD chief, Ann Kirkpatrick, that they are clearly identified as law enforcement and that they are not wearing masks that obscure their identity. This is really important because this level of clarity protects not only the community, but also law enforcement agencies as well. Our fourth request has to do with safeguards against discriminatory enforcement. These are really safeguards against any type of profiling. The city expects firm assurances that no stops or detentions are based on race, ethnicity, national origin, language, or perceived immigration status. We are requesting demographic data to monitor and prevent unequal treatment. And finally, the fifth point and fifth demand are humanitarian considerations. We need assurances that any individual detained has access to medical care, necessary medications, language interpretation, and notification of family members. Federal operations must uphold the basic and humane treatment that all should be allowed in this country. Overall, our points are just very simple. They're simple. They're centered around communication, transparency, accountability, and upholding people's constitutional rights. I don't believe that we're asking for too many. Three of different speakers today. First with our congressman Troy Carter. Then after that, it'll be city council president JP Morel speaking on behalf of the New Orleans City Council, followed by our former mayor, Mark Morial, also head of the National Urban League, Omero Lopez with Immigration Services and Legal Advocacy, Myra Pineda with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Sarah Whittington with ACLU, and then Pastor Sean England, who is representing a group of faith leaders here in our city of New Orleans. So Congressman Carter, we'll start it with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor-elect, and thank you all for being here. I stand proudly and in unity with our mayor-elect, our city council members, our local and national leaders to address this grave concern, the concern surrounding recent federal activity in our community. Thank you all for being here. This show of unity says it all. New Orleans is a city with a soul. Our culture, our neighborhood, our traditions, and a deep sense of community shape how we live and how we keep each other safe. Any law enforcement activity in our city, including federal operations, must honor that reality. It must reflect an understanding of our local laws, our norms, our people. I've been in communication with Homeland Security for further clarity. To date, we receive no information. We must make sure that if you're going to come into the city of New Orleans, the state of Louisiana, any of our municipalities, there has to be a concerted effort. There has to be a basic degree of respect for local laws, for de-escalation, for the understanding of our municipal laws, our cultures, and our people, to coordinate if you really want to help, Mr. President. There are ways you can do it. You can provide resources for more police officers, better training for police officers, training in the areas of de-escalation, working with the root cause and causes of crime. If you truly want to go after the bad guys, if you will, there's ways to do that. As a member of United States Homeland Security, I'll be requesting a full field hearing to be held here in New Orleans so we can directly address and assess these pressing issues in the light of day and in the presence of the people most affected. Let me be abundantly clear. We support strong action against violence and dangerous individuals. Public safety is a shared responsibility, and our city has worked hard to reduce crime through prevention, collaboration, and trust. We cannot support operations that create fear, confusion, or disruption for families, workers, or small businesses. Effective enforcement does not require heavy-handed tactics. It requires communication, de-escalation, transparency, and respect for the community being served. We want federal partners. We just don't want occupation. We want to have them work with us, not around us. We want accountability. We want clarity, and we want enforcement efforts that strengthen public trust instead of shaking it to its core. And in summary, I want to reiterate, we embrace help from the federal government. We embrace help from anyone who wants to make our city better, safer, stronger, but you must recognize that we have a government in place. We have elected leaders. We have a city charter that dictates the power structure and how things are coordinated. We simply ask that that's respected. We simply ask that we have enforcement and not fear, focused on lawful enforcement. Our people deserve safety, dignity, and transparency. I will continue to stand with our mayor-elect, our city council, our community leaders, our national leaders to get our city and our state nothing less. Thank you for being here.
Sorry, I'm wearing a mask because I have a cold. In fact, the only two times appropriate to wear a mask in the city of New Orleans is when you're sick and when it's Mardi Gras. So I don't think anyone's told ICE that. So let's talk about reality. We've heard a lot of stories from the federal government as to why they're here. We've heard that they are here to detain 5,000 illegal immigrants who are criminals, who are a danger to our streets. I will tell you that as someone who has studied law enforcement for a very long time, you should never trust a quota. And when groups come in and say, "We're looking to arrest 5,000 people," that tells you they're looking to arrest 5,000 people. And the lack of transparency that we have gotten from those parties operating here in their jurisdiction, but without the support and help of our local people, the lack of information on who they're arrested and why has been very, very troubling. Now, this is nothing new for New Orleans. I mean, if you look back to the history of the city from Napoleon to Jefferson to Jackson to now Trump, you've always had people at the national and state level trying to impose their will on the city. And what you're seeing right now is just that, an effort for political reasons for people outside of the city to impose their values and their judgments of what they think New Orleans should be upon the city. We are a city of immigrants, more so than almost any city in the United States. We are a port city that welcomes groups from everywhere across this world, and our culture is greater for it. Everything about New Orleans, everything you love about this city is because of our rich, diverse melting pot, and that will not change. We will always be the city that welcomes everyone, and that's really encapsulated in the sign you may see in many restaurants where it says, "Be nice or leave." And we would certainly encourage ICE to follow that really basic tenet. Part of being nice or leaving in New Orleans is staying out of our schools, our recreation centers, our libraries, and off our city buses, staying out of our civic and religious spaces, our food banks, our shelters, and respect the sanctity of our temples of worship, respect our cultural spaces, our practices, including second lines, funeral processions, our Black Masked Indians, and our various festivals. These are not places for you to go into to inspire terror in regards to a mission that is very, very unclear. Now, as I've said, we have heard that there is a reason for them being here, and we have not seen actions or information that belies that reason is legitimate. As the council vice president and mayor-elect has said, this is your opportunity to be transparent, to give us the information that you say led you to this city, to give us the list of people that are these criminal elements that you're seeking to ferret out, and to be transparent about why you're detaining or harassing people. I can tell you, like many of you, I saw the video yesterday of a young Mother Amarrero fleeing ICE only to be safe on her own property. It was obvious in the wake of that, this was not someone that was an illegal immigrant, this is not somebody who was a criminal, this was a mom at the grocery store. That is what we are seeing, and that does not match the reasons and rationale as to why ICE is allegedly here. I do not believe you are here for the reason you say you're here, but you have an opportunity to prove me wrong. Provide the information that's being requested by this New Orleans City Council by our mayor-elect, and prove that there's actual actionable information that has led to you thinking that there are 5,000 violent criminals lurking in the greater New Orleans area. The lack of providing that information, the lack of transparency, shows that's not really the reason why you're here. Until then, this council will continue to use all the resources available to us, legal and otherwise, to make sure that the citizens of the city are protected. Thank you.
First of all, good afternoon. I'm Mark Morial. I used to work here. And I want to thank Mayor-elect Moreno for her leadership, the members of the city council, and the other community leaders in this moment for standing together. I come today as president of the National Urban League, the nation's largest historic civil rights and urban advocacy organization. We operate in 300 communities, 36 states, 93 affiliates. We serve almost 10 million people a year. We have been monitoring very closely the actions of ICE and the National Guard in cities all across the nation. And there are a few points that I want to make. Number one, this policy that's been undertaken by the administration is an absolute and abject failure. It's a failure for a number of reasons. Number one, it's inconsistent with what the administration said they were going to do. What they said is, "We will focus and target on undocumented individuals that have criminal records or outstanding warrants." What we know from Los Angeles all the way here is that those words are being betrayed by the actions of ICE, that this sweep is catching, number one, people who are undocumented for whom there is no outstanding warrant nor are they wanted for a crime. Let me remind everyone that immigration violations are civil violations, civil violations under U.S. law. They are sweeping into communities where naturalized citizens, those that have work visas, green cards, have every right to be in the country, are being swept in to this net. Consider this, there are 66,000 people currently in immigration detention across the nation today. Less than 50% of them have outstanding warrants or criminal histories. The other 50% do not meet the standard, do not meet the standard that the administration set for itself. Number two, it is abhorrent to me, absolutely abhorrent, that law enforcement would feel they need to wear masks. I grew up in this city. I was born in a segregated hospital when segregation was the law of this city. Masks remind me, and I want to be clear, remind me of the tactics of the Ku Klux Klan. Let me be clear, I do not suggest that the ICE or the Ku Klux Klan. But in this country, there is zero precedent for sworn law enforcement officers to mask themselves to carry out public enforcement actions. Number two, I would encourage them, if they're insisting on wearing masks, they can ride in Rex, Zulu, and Demian. We know masking in New Orleans. It's abhorrent that they're wearing masks. Further, further, the demands being made by the mayor-elect today are reasonable. They are consistent with the obligations that these leaders have to protect the public and to protect the citizens. And their actions are in no way quote-unquote interfering with the actions of ICE. Additionally, we must be concerned because over the last 48 to 72 hours, I've received a number of calls from business owners, hotel general managers, and the like, of the impact negative that these actions will have on the New Orleans economy. Grocery stores close, hotel employees and restaurant employees not coming to work, therefore, forcing, in one case, a hotel general manager said to me, "I may have to cancel reservations for the Sugar Bowl upcoming because I simply don't have enough personnel." The final thing I'll say, there's a better way to do this. This policy is failed. The immigration system is absolutely broken, but that this administration has not advanced nor supported in the past any proposal, partisan or bipartisan, from a legislative point of view, to fix a broken system. This policy makes no sense, and it also is not sustainable over time. So the civil rights community is monitoring these activities all across the nation, and we will continue to speak out. And no one here is going to be intimidated by rhetoric, whether it comes from Baton Rouge, Washington, or anywhere, in terms of standing up for the dignity of human beings in this city. These are mothers, these are families, these are children, these are people who work, these are people who are contributing in many instances to this community, and now, all of a sudden, many of them will find themselves detained. And guess what? That means that taxpayers of the United States will be paying to room, to board, to clothe, and take care of them. Think about that policy. So we stand together today. Thank you.
I'll keep my remarks short and sweet, much like me. My name is Omer Lopez. I am the legal director for Immigration Services and Legal Advocacy. We are a pro bono immigration services provider. We represent people throughout detention in Louisiana, and we've been doing it for approximately seven years now, fully. This operation is a complete disgrace. What we are hearing from our community members, what we are hearing from our clients, is exactly what we've seen happen in other cities. Folks are being arrested indiscriminately, targeted for the color of their skin, the language they speak, the location where they're working. This is a sorry pretext of using public safety as the pretext for why they're doing this operation. If anything, it is making our community more afraid and less safe in a situation where folks aren't able to send or feel scared to send their kids to school, where folks feel afraid to go to work, where folks in any situation are hunkering down instead of doing the things that they were doing in our society. They are targeting members of the immigrant community across the board, they're targeting U.S. citizens, they're targeting permit holders, they're targeting people who are going through the process across the board. As the president, as the council president said, they're not in any way targeting a specific group of people. They have a quota, and they're going after an entire, that 5,000 is what they want. That's who they're going after, that's what they're going to do. They're going to get their 5,000. It doesn't matter whether they fit what kind of category, except, you know, basically being brown, speaking Spanish, and working in particular areas of the economy. And so, as a community, we remind everybody, you have rights. Speak up, exercise your rights. And although, unfortunately, people's rights have been violated, continue to speak up your rights, to exercise your rights, and the community will come out, at least the legal community, we're working together to be able to protect people after your rights have been violated. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Myra Pineda. I'm the president and CEO of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Louisiana, nonprofit, a statewide nonprofit. We definitely thank Mayor-elect and the council for allowing us to be here and supporting the requests that we have. We are in full alignment with these requests. We feel and have been sharing through our messages the impact, the economic impact, the mental health impact that these policies are having throughout the community. When you see businesses and business owners having to close down, when children can't go to school or to church, and they can't conduct their normal lives, I mean, I think everybody has seen there is no traffic. Why? You go to the mall, nobody's there. So the economic impact is going to be great, the mental health as well. We need to request and demand respect for our community. We need to, the Chamber of Commerce, our mission is to foster a favorable business environment for business owners. So instead of doing what we do best, helping business owners with resources and tools to grow, we're now trying to help them with grants and ways to survive because they won't be able to, some of them are still recovering from COVID. So as a community, we need to continue to be proud of our roots, continue to fight for our rights, and educate our people to make sure that we are following due process, that we are making sure that a conversation begins around reform, the immigration reform, which is long overdue, and the humanitarian treatment of our people. The Chamber of Commerce has put out a resource page with tools for business owners, for individuals, is working with many and collaborating with many other organizations, but stands in alignment with this, with the mayor-elect and the city council, and making sure that during this process, our people and the soul of New Orleans is respected. So thank you very much again, and we'll continue to work.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Whittington. I'm the advocacy director for the ACLU of Louisiana and a member of the Free the Swamp campaign, standing in opposition to the militarization and federalization of New Orleans. We at the ACLU stand before you to share many of the emotions that our communities are currently feeling: shock, disgust, fear, and rage. In just a few days, it has become clear that Border Patrol and ICE have zero accountability. Citizens have already been profiled because of the color of their skin, chased, hunted, and workers have even stared down barrels of rifles just trying to do their jobs. This chaos and lack of professionalism and alarming disregard for civil rights exhibited by these federal agents should shock not just Louisianans, but the country at large. But we will not stop working to fight back against these atrocities and trying to keep our community safe. This week, we sued Attorney General Merle over Act 399 on behalf of ISLA and the absurdly vague law that attempted to criminalize anything deemed as interference with federal immigration efforts. Immediately upon our filing, the AG conceded in writing that Act 399 will not and cannot be used against speech and protected First Amendment actions. It is a dark time that we have to seek clarification about whether the First Amendment still stands. But this week, in our courts and from the AG herself, we confirmed it still does. And it is a reminder that when we fight authoritarian overreach, we win. We are here to demand not just transparency from these federal agents, but to tell them that if they are going to make our city less safe, they are not welcome here. New Orleans has seen historic low crime rates over the past year because of local investments in prevention strategies led by many on the council here today. Thank you. And for any federal officers here in our beloved city, we want to make this clear. The people of New Orleans will stand together, and we will keep each other and our city safe. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor-elect, for gathering us. It's an important day. Pastor Sean, a first grace at United Methodist Church on Canal and Norman C. Francis. And I think, as we've heard in our remarks, everything that I have seen happening is unconstitutional, it's un-American, and it's unacceptable. More importantly, it violates our common humanity, which every religion teaches and any decent person knows of. So much of the root of evil is valuing another people over other people. And right now, if you're not white, and especially if you're not a white man, you are suspect in this city. Members of my church and of other communities, churches, people are not going out, not because they're immigrants, but because of the color of their skin. This policy is a violation of our life together and the violation of the spirit of New Orleans. All over our city, the hope I see is days like today and hundreds of New Orleanians who are gathering all over our city to to understand how they can help their neighbors, their immigrant neighbors. How can I help? The more we confront this, the more we'll bring it to an end because the people perpetrating this cannot stop themselves. We have to help them be better people and better Americans. So, I want to thank the city of New Orleans and all the groups who are joining together, and again, our mayor-elect for bringing us together to put an end to what is happening in our beloved city that celebrates light together. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. Just a point that I wanted to make based on some of the comments, and that is the level of crime reduction that we're currently seeing right here in the city of New Orleans. We are seeing significant violent crime reduction. In fact, I had the stats checked just before I came in, and we are on pace right now to have the fewest murders since 1970. That's where we're at right now. Now, obviously, we do know that there is more work to do, and we absolutely would like fruitful federal investments and resources. And in the letter that we sent to Commander Balino today, we actually talked about that. We would actually very much welcome getting in a room together to talk about what those fruitful federal resources could be. Anything from investments in prevention, which is one of the reasons why our crime numbers are so low, to even more assistance to our New Orleans Police Department. I've talked to Chief Kirkpatrick about the necessity for additional federal prosecutors. I've talked to Chief Kirkpatrick on the state level, really, on additional resources coming from probation and parole. So, there is this additional assistance that we would welcome, but more than anything, we would like that dialogue so that we can have that conversation with our federal agencies as to what the city of New Orleans needs to make us safer overall. And then, I also want to mention too, just what we as city leaders are experiencing every day and the calls that are coming into my office. Just about 15 minutes before I came to this particular news conference, my receptionist, Josette, she received a call from someone saying that they know one of their loved ones was detained, but they have no idea where he is and really are seeking some kind of assistance to figure out where he is. Those are the real-life scenarios and situations that are happening right here in our city and our region, and those are the types of calls that we are starting to get right here at the city council level. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions. I'm going to start from left and take it over to right. Come on, left.
How do you find to find these people, figure out who they are, and contact their families of an instance you just mentioned?
Yeah, great question. That's one of the reasons why we are demanding this level of information. To me, you know, I was shocked to find out that when I requested some of this information about who had been detained recently on Elysian Fields in the city of New Orleans, that that information would not be provided to me. I was interested to know, okay, who was detained? What were the charges? Were there any outstanding warrants? And I was just told flat no, that I would not be able to receive this information. I was then later sent additional information that I could potentially send free, that I could send in a public records request essentially. And so, just like you all are having trouble finding information as to who has been detained and why, so are we. WW?
Yes, so Attorney General Liz Merle recently, like minutes ago, just put out a press release ordering Superintendent Kirkpatrick to cooperate with the ICE and Border Patrol operations. She's not here today, but what do you make of that press release and as well? Do you believe that the superintendent aligns with you and the rest of your team there?
The superintendent of police, Chief Kirkpatrick, is following all the laws. She is doing exactly what she needs to be doing. She is the head of a police department. Her job is to move forward with criminal laws, state and local criminal laws, and that is exactly what she's doing. To Mayor Moriell's point and a point that Chief Kirkpatrick has constantly made is that immigration matters are civil matters, and that is not under the jurisdiction of the New Orleans Police Department.
I do have a question for Mr. Romero as well. Should we come back?
Yeah, you know what, come on. Sure.
Can you talk about some of the people who have been detained? As far as their legal status, if they're going through the process? And do you think more people are being detained who are legal in this country compared to people who are undocumented and are not going through that process?
Just as a point of reference, we don't necessarily reference people as being legal and illegal. That's not a status for a person. All people have humanity, and so, that's the way we work with it. Whether they're going through the process, what we've identified and what we've seen from folks who are reaching out to us is a significant majority of the people who have reached out to us directly that their family members have been detained, the majority of them are going through some kind of process. Whether they have permanent status yet or whether they're in the process of getting that status, that's a different question. But the majority of them are going through a process to get status, whether that be as a special immigrant juvenile who was abandoned, neglected, or abused, and therefore, a state court has said that it is in their best interest to remain in the United States and get status here, or whether it's somebody who has been a victim of a crime and has cooperated with law enforcement in prosecuting that crime and therefore is eligible for a different type of visa. Someone who's seeking asylum because of persecution they suffered in their home country. Whatever the situation happens to be, they're in the process, they're going through that, and that's the low-hanging fruit that ICE is targeting, is folks who are actually out and not hiding, they're not avoiding detection, they're in the system, and they're going through the process.
Josh?
What would steps you be taking for the non-Latino communities, particularly in the East, Vietnamese community, Muslim communities, people from Afghanistan, places like that? Are you also reaching out and trying to get help with them? And what is the status in those parts of town?
Yeah, I mean, yes to all of that. As we work with different advocacy groups, that is the approach that we're taking. And the guidance that we have put forward, one of the things that I've asked to do is that we start translating that into different languages as well.
Since ICE is a federal agency, I mean, what realistically do you expect to come from the demands today?
Look, I mean, bottom line, the demands that we are asking is really something that I believe is so reasonable that really every American citizen should be asking for. This is about really just ensuring that there are constitutional protections and that people's rights are not violated, ensuring that when people are taken from the streets of any city, not just New Orleans, but any city, that we understand what happened to them, particularly since it's the government picking them up. I mean, all of these things are, to me, something that all Americans should get behind. This is the real crux of the issue, that it just seems that what is happening is in violation of the real order of government. And so, that's the scary piece, and that's what's creating so much fear. And so, I hope that, to Council President's point, Council President Merle's point, I hope that they do follow up and provide us this information and prove us all wrong. Go ahead, Eva Noel.
How is the council working with other municipalities to have them onboard with these same demands? Does there have been any communication with other municipalities?
So, I'll let other council members, if you can weigh in on some of the others.
I mean, it's important to note that, in this cap of the council meeting the other day, that there are communities that are actually 287G cooperating with ICE, which is very different than New Orleans' position. Particular Gretna and Kenner are actually cooperating municipalities. And so, I would say that it is more than likely, on this particular issue in the Grand New Orleans area, that New Orleans will stand alone, but that's not unique in any issue with New Orleans. When we're doing the right thing, just because other surrounding parishes don't want to do it, that's not a reason not to do it. So, to your point, we have not had communications, but if some group has already gone through the 287G process to become a cooperating municipality, there's really not much point in talking to them.
Telemundo, and then I'll keep moving.
Do you think the Latino community can be saved in the city of New Orleans right now?
Obviously, the reason--
And do you think we can trust the New Orleans Police Department?
Look, obviously, the reason why we're here is because we want to do all possible to help ensure that, one, people understand their rights and know that we as a city government, that we are demanding much more from the federal government and that we believe that this is something that actually has become harmful and that has gone too far, and it has a variety of different impacts to our city, including economic impacts. And do I believe that they can trust the New Orleans Police Department? Yes, I do. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, another question alluded to what expectation you have on behalf of the federal government to comply with your requests. What legal options do you have to force their hand if they don't comply?
Well, I'll tell you. As I often say, we may not always have the votes, but we have our voice. As I mentioned in my earlier comments, I intend to request that we have a field hearing here in New Orleans and compel members of Homeland, members of CBP, and the leadership and community at large to come and answer these questions that heretofore they've ignored. Light is the best, is the best sanitation to these issues, and we will continue to bring light to it. And we will enforce every bit of our energy as we often talk about the three Cs, the Congress, the courts, and the community. And we will work in tandem to hold those federal actors accountable. One of the chief responsibilities of members of Congress is oversight. I happen to serve on Homeland Security with direct oversight over Border Patrol. We are going to continue to use our voices, albeit in this constitution that we have, where we have a system of checks and balances we have never seen in our history. Such a challenge, but we won't quit. As unified today by the leaders that are here, led by our mayor-elect, we will stay in this battle, and we will continue to push and to force this issue and force our federal partners to do what's right by keeping the lights bright.
Let me just add one thing to your question. There are those in the civil rights community now who are evaluating, asserting whether there are legal options to limit, curtail, or even stop what is going on. So, I think it's important for people to stay tuned. If you look at what has happened in other communities, there have been lawsuits brought. And this is the most important point. ICE and the Border Control are public employers. They're public servants. They owe an obligation to you as the media, as protectors of the First Amendment, to the mayor-elect and the elected officials here, and to the people, some answers. And I would encourage all of you to go find them, to go look for them, and to go demand those answers to these requests that are being made by Mayor-elect. Since when in this country is anybody beyond the standard of accountability to provide no information? You know, this is what you see in China. People disappear. Their family members don't know where they are, how they are. That is not what we do in the United States of America. This is what happens in Russia and the old Soviet Union, where people are swept up, they're detained, and there is no answer as to what they're being charged with. That is why this issue is so gut-wrenching because it smacks of things that are fundamentally un-American. Asking for the names of people who've been detained to give some comfort to members of their family, asking what the charges are against them, giving sufficient information so that they can be represented by counsel to protect them is a basic principle of the American legal system going all the way back to the founding of this country. We're going to stand and not allow those basic principles to be broken, to be shattered, to be trashed. And so, the mayor-elect's questions deserve answers. They deserve answers very quickly, and I don't understand why anyone would not want to respond to what are a set of reasonable responses. But the civil rights community will, will be a participant in any options available, if necessary, to bring litigation, if litigation has been.
The other piece to your question too that I would just mention is I do believe that the politics of all this is starting to turn. Even very conservative folks within our city, within our region, are believing that this is a step too far, that this has gone well beyond what it ever needed to be. And so, that is why it's also so important that we are on the record with our demands, that you as a media is putting out there, like what is really happening within our city and within our region, so that as the tide turns, this political tide turns, ultimately, I'm sure that this will be undone.
The Attorney General has also warned of potential consequences for those who obstruct federal agents. I'm wondering how you think about the potential risks to the city when you're weighing what additional steps you might take?
Well, I certainly don't believe that asking for transparency, asking for accountability of federal agencies, asking for communication by any means is obstructive. If anything, it's just a logical ask that any elected leader would have.
Have you shared your concerns directly with the governor and Attorney General?
I have had conversations with some members of the governor's team, not the governor, directly. But obviously, I think it's been very clear, just like you're sharing with me the Attorney General's comments, I'm sure my comments over this past week have been shared.
Is there anything that you would like to see them be doing differently?
Yeah, I would like for them to help us advocate, to get some of this information and ensure this level of transparency and accountability.
Mayor-elect, if I could, so many people on social media, we're going to get a ton of emails, phone calls at the station, supporting Border Patrol's operation and President Trump. What would you say to those people?
Look, I think overall that there are immigration laws and rules for a reason. But once again, the reason why we are here is that the level of enforcement and what has happened is not what this operation was supposed to be about. Remember, everything that you've seen and all that you've been told by the federal agencies that this is about getting the most violent, the very worst of the worst. It's about getting, as I quote, "the rapists, the pedophiles, and the murderers." But that's not what's happening. We are seeing mothers, young women, people who are out there trying to do work, thrown to the ground, chased around, treated like they are the most violent of violent people. But at this point, we don't have any data to ever show that that is who they are. And so, that's why we're here. Look, there's a reason why there's immigration laws, no doubt about it. We're not saying not to follow immigration laws, but what is happening here where people are disappearing off of our streets and we don't even know where they went? This is a step, many, many steps way too far.
All right, thank you, everybody. We've got the letter that was sent over to the Border Patrol commander. We'll share that with you all.